Everybody signed in? I'm sorry, I'm talking to them. I hit the microphone one minute too early, moment too early. Alright, we still got technically two seconds. One. Alright, here we go. Good evening and welcome to the City of Smyrna Planning and Zoning Meeting. Today is September 9th, 2019. It's 6:00 PM and this meeting's called to order. At this time, I'd like to ask that all electronic devices be turned off as they interfere with our recording equipment. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting's conducted much like a council meeting. As such, each application will include a presentation from city staff, followed by a question and answer session between staff and the board. Following staff's presentation, we'll have the applicant present their case and answer any questions from the board. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. We ask that you come forward, one at a time, state your name and address clearly for the record, and sign the sign-in sheet at the podium. Didn't realize we were gonna have so much activity tonight. Minutes, so it looks like a little bit more business to negotiate. The first item on our agenda is 2019-230. This is zoning application Z19-011. This item is to be tabled to the October 14 Planning and Zoning Meeting at the request of the applicant. Can we get a motion to table, please? We have a motion. Mr. Bartlett, second, Ms. Harrington, all in favor? Somebody's not voting. You're good. The motion has been... Time, the next item on the agenda, I have to recuse myself from being here, so I am going to step aside and let Ms. Harrington take over for that portion of the meeting. At that point, we'll have a two-minute recess and then I'll re-enter the chamber. I'm recusing myself because I'm the owner and developer of the parcel that is in question.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming. At this time, we are going to be hearing 2019-268 Public Hearing, approval for a subdivision plat for two lots with a lot width variance for each lot. It is .87 acres, land lot number 489-2646, Hughes Street Fairbank Construction Services LLC. Okay, may we have the background, Mr. Stropp?
Sure, Joey Staub's Planner 2 with Community Development. This is variance Z19-032. Applicant is Fairbanks Construction Services. Be heard tonight by Planning and Zoning and then by Mayor and Council next Monday. This is a single lot right now. It has a one-single-family house on it. It was platted in 1930s, I believe, as two lots. The applicant is wanting to go back to that two-lot configuration. It's .07 acres, zoned R15, it'll remain R15. This is the proposed lot split. Front setback of 35 feet, side setback of 10 feet, rear setback of 30. Normal R15 zoning requirements. We'll need a lot width reduction from 85 feet to 78 feet. This is the subject property. Pictures of adjacent properties. And Community Development recommends approval of the lot split with the lot width reduction at 2646 Hughes Street. The previous plat, so...
Are there any questions for the staff? Thank you. Okay, at this time, the applicant can come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is...
The mic can phone down just a little bit.
And we're here representing Joel Powell and Fairbanks Construction. My family owns the 2646 Hughes Street lot, and we would like to turn this property to its original entry of zoning. The original entry is two houses.
We are here today asking to revert 2646 Hughes Street to the original plat of two lots. This requires a variance to reduce the front lot width from 85 feet to 78 feet. The minimum lot size is greater than the 15,000 square foot minimum for R15, and we plan to construct two custom homes that are approximately 3,400 square feet. We have positioned these lots as close to Hughes Street as the zoning will allow, and we have also positioned them to save as many of the mature trees on the property as possible.
I know Fairbanks Construction can do it because they don't just make houses, they make homes.
We respectfully ask for you to support our application.
Does anyone have any questions?
Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to ask if anyone would like to come forward to speak. Please come to the podium. Give us your name and sign in at the sheet, please.
Address and all that?
Not right now, thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Judy Ingram Adkins. I live at 2630 Hughes Street, which is... I've lived there for 30 years. It's the property immediately adjacent on the north side of this property. My primary concern with this proposed variance is that our neighborhood has... You know, we moved in, we moved into places with large lawns and large trees, and I understand that development is happening and larger homes are gonna come in. And I know that Joel has already put two, a couple other houses on our street already. One at the bottom of the street on Powder Springs and one at the corner of Brown Circle and Hill Street. And they are both around roughly, one of them is 3,800 and one of them is close to 3,400. I don't know exactly. And those houses both have frontages, those two houses that he's already built, which already seem very large for our neighborhood, have frontages. One of them, the one at the corner of Powder Springs Street and Hughes Street, has a frontage of 111 feet on one side and 195 feet on the other side. The one at the corner of Brown Circle and Hill Street that I can see from my house has a frontage of 103 feet on one side and 150 feet on the other side. Those lots, even though those houses still seem big to me, they were approved, but they worked, and there still is enough land in between the houses because they were on larger frontages. This is, you're asking for a 30-foot basic difference with a house that large. I think that he either needs to keep it as one lot and build a really large house and keep the space on either side, or if he's gonna divide it into two lots with only 70... I saw that it was gonna be 77 feet they were asking for, which is a reduction of eight feet, 77, 78 feet. That's at least 30 feet less than the frontages of those other really large houses. We're gonna become a cluster home neighborhood where there are 10 feet in between houses, and that's not who we have ever been, and that's also not what the new houses, even the very large houses that are being built, look like. I think it's an obstruction when I look at the zoning, the various factors for what you consider. I think it is, it's an obstruction certainly to our lot, but it's also really changing the dynamics even more than the already larger houses have. They've still considered space in between the houses and have been on appropriate-sized lots. The size of these lots just doesn't work with a 35, 3,800 square foot house without changing everything, and I think we have a right to say something about that as neighbors. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward?
Hi, my name is Kirsten Protos. This is my daughter Ellie Protos. So we live at 2694 Hughes Street. And I feel very similar to what, everything that Judy talked about. I think that Joel has built two now, in the process of a third house in our neighborhood. Actually, he's built more than that, and all of his homes are lovely homes. He builds a great home, so... But we're very concerned about the splitting of the lot and how close it will put two very large homes together. And we, I mean, I am an owner of a large home. We rebuilt an older home that we lived on on Hughes Street, but we also acquired a double lot, so we have a 3,800 square foot home on .75 acres with enough frontage and trees in between, which is within keeping of most of the neighborhood. And that's what we would like to continue to see in the neighborhood, is trees in between homes and properties. And we're concerned that the changing with this variance is that it will set a new precedent for the neighborhood that will allow other double lots, or if two lots are bought next to each other, that then it will become, you know, a new trend to put homes that close to each other in our neighborhood. And it's just not, I mean, our neighborhood is more historical, and we wanna keep it looking the way that it is currently looking.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward?
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Kevin Moore. I live at 2641 Brown Circle, Southeast Smyrna, Georgia. I am the street over from this proposed project. In full disclosure, Mr. Powell is my brother-in-law. But I think a lot of times what we see is, when people come up here, you, in a lot of cases, not just this application, but other applications, you oftentimes hear the vocal minority. Many people in our neighborhood, in our town, are very happy with the work that Fairbanks Property does and what Joel does. Joel is from Smyrna, was born here, grew up here, grew up on Fraser Street, went to University of Georgia, and came back here. This is his home. It's not just his place of business, it is his home. He doesn't do anything with a short-term thinking. He's always trying to make his town better. He is very proud of his town and always has that core value at heart. And that's basically all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Good evening.
My name is Carlton Adkins.
Adkins?
Adkins, yes. Live at 2630 Hughes Street. My wife Judy already spoke. I wasn't planning to speak, but several things just touched me. I spoke to Joel today, and I've had a couple of email exchanges with him. And I do believe Joel cares about this community, and I believe Joel builds good houses. So I'm not here to misrepresent Joel in any way, or to slander Joel, or to... Y'all work with him all the time, so you know. I'm just speaking from my heart that we moved into this community 30 years ago. As it's been said, it's a historic neighborhood. The home that's gonna be torn down was built in 1937, so was my house. So it's an older neighborhood. I don't know when that was a double lot. I mean, I've always known that it was twice as big a lot as mine, but it's only been a one-house on there for 82 years. It does change the whole fabric of our neighborhood. It is, it's gonna be obstructive to our enjoyment of our neighborhood. We live basically on that side of our house. Our whole side of our house is windows. We look out every day on beautiful trees, on our beautiful neighborhood, and when their home is built 10 feet away from me, I'm gonna be looking at the side of a house. I know that happens every day in every neighborhood around where they build these houses. But it just needs to be said that it breaks my heart. And it breaks my heart that originally Joel was talking about having to cut down some trees, but he's, he heard us say, "We want to protect those trees." We don't, and so he did say he was gonna do everything he could do to save those trees, and I really appreciate that because it is part of the culture of Smyrna. And I know Smyrna's changed, we've been here long enough to see Smyrna change, and that's all good. But we also need to protect and defend what we believe is the heart and soul of our neighborhoods. And so, I appreciate you taking my time.
Thank you, Mr. Adkins. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward?
Hello, I'm Shane Powell. I actually am the project manager for Fairbanks. I live at 1,000 Powder Springs Street. I think if you look back at our history, we very rarely have asked to subdivide lots. We build quality homes, and it is personal. We live here, our families live here. We think that this is a nice layout for this lot that is there. People are subdividing lots all over the place, handy. I mean, they're stacked in. Go down Bank Street, you see them. That's really all I wanna say. I mean, if you look back at our history, it's not something that we come before you every time asking to subdivide lots. And we just feel that this may be the best that we think that we can do for this lot to continue to build nice, custom homes in the City of Smyrna. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Can I ask the gentleman some?
Yes.
Couple of questions?
Could you please stand?
The lots, well, you're asking for one variance from the current zoning requirements. It does currently meet all the other setback requirements, is that correct?
Yes, sir, to my knowledge, it does.
What are, what are the size of the lots, each of the two lots, once it's subdivided into two?
I haven't personally looked at the zoning plans yet. We've got numerous projects going, so I've been in the field and been extremely busy. So I personally have not looked at them.
The minimum lot size for the smallest lot is 19,200 square feet, more or less.
Right, which is well within the zoning requirement.
Which is 4,000 more than what's the minimum requirement for the zoning district.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Any other questions? Good evening.
I'm Charles Vickery. I reside at 2620 Hughes Street. I moved to Smyrna in that house with my mom and dad and older brother in 1953, and I'm still there in that house. And the house that's in question, of the lot, we all kinda grew up thinking that it was just a big lot, you know? We didn't know it was two lots. And there's always, that house that's there has always been there. And so, and I know that there's large trees that are in the rear of this house. And they probably had to come down, or some of them come down, and I'd hate to see any of them come down. And the traffic that is going to be on this little narrow street, of course, it's been there, there's been traffic on, a lot of traffic on it before because they've built two or three houses in there since. But it's getting worse. It's not gonna really affect my house, per se, but I have had to ask people, or construction people, that are building and adding own houses in my area to, if they would move, because I could back, I couldn't get in and out of my driveway. And the fire truck has tried to come up Hughes Street, and he's had to blow the horn because they can't get up through there, and Hill Street as well. So I, I would hate to see this one house demolished and two houses put in there on that lot. If there is two houses gonna go in there, telephone pole is gonna have to be moved. It's got six guide wires coming off of it. And all of that's gonna have to be moved. So I think it's just too big of an ordeal, and I'm not questioning Mr. Powell's ability to build a fine home, and, but I'm just questioning the fact of putting two houses in there on that one, well, that's two lots, but, and so I'd just like to see it stay. One house where the setback on it is where they got it proposed. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Would anyone else like to stand up, come forward? Come on down.
Hello, everyone. My name is Drew Downey. This is my daughter Leighton. She kept me outside, so I apologize. I live, I currently live in the 400 Belmont Apartments. I just moved from Williams Park, and I am moving on to 2669 Hughes Street. And Joel is the builder of my house. And I just wanna speak on my experience with Joel as my builder and what I've seen working with him on this house and seeing him build some of my friends' houses. My wife is in real estate. We have, we moved to Smyrna about five years ago now, and have moved four times since then, all getting closer to this area. We love Smyrna so much, and as soon as we left school, this is the only place we wanted to come. We have seen the boom that has happened in real estate in Smyrna and seen a lot of builders that have rightfully taken advantage of that. And I think that's perfectly okay, and I understand the economy behind that. But I have seen Joel do everything but take shortcuts on the home that he's building for me and for the people that I've seen. Every conversation that I've had with him has been about how to build a house that's more sturdy, that's more sustainable, more maintainable. And quite frankly, I think we need more homes like that in Smyrna. I've seen homes that were built to make a profit that were beautiful, and that's not these houses. These houses are strong, and we talked more about our foundation than we've talked about our windows, or doors, or trim, or anything like that. And so I think, I came from Williams Park, like I said, one of my other favorite neighborhoods in Smyrna. Those houses are a lot closer together than what we're talking about right now. So I just wanna say I'm a firm supporter of having two more homes built by Joel on my street because I think it does good for the community and good for our street.
Thank you. Is there any more input from the public? Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? At this time, I would like to have a motion.
Don't have to read it. The motion, do I have to read it?
Okay, we have a motion to approve public hearing 2019-268, approval of subdivision plat for two lots with a lot width variance for each lot at 1 point, at .87 acres, land lot number 489-2646 Hughes Street. I have a second, Ms. Lightfine? We have approval 5-0. Thank you. We'll have a short recess while we get Joel back in.
Just so the residents who came up and spoke tonight, this will be going to Mayor and Council next week, so you'll have another opportunity for a public hearing at that point as well, okay?
What does that mean if it's already been approved?
The Planning and Zoning Board is an advisory board, so they're making a recommendation to Mayor and Council. Mayor and Council will make the final decision.
You're welcome.
Alright. I would expect nothing more. Alright, my apologies for that inconvenience. You guys know that I don't normally do something like that, anyway. It's 6:28, and we are back in order. Mr. Staub?
Zoning KC 19-012, Drew Irig for 652 Concord Road. Will be heard tonight by Planning and Zoning Board and Mayor and Council on October 21st. Is the subject property formerly Howard's Restaurant, formerly Crafty Hog. It's 1.184 acres. It's an existing restaurant building on the property now, and the applicant is requesting to rezone it to general commercial for use as a special event facility. Current zoning is neighborhood shopping. Future land use is community activity center. It'll remain community activity center. Adjointing properties are... Adjoining properties are community activity center, public institutional, and then across Concord Road is moderate density residential. Is the subject property. It'll have full access drives from Concord Road and Smyrna Hill Drive. This is the existing building that'll remain. Some improvements landscaping and, um, improvements to the front of the building. And they will retain the 105 parking spaces that are currently there. This is pictures of the subject property and the adjacent properties. And staff recommends approval with the following conditions. The applicant will have to bring the fire alarm system into compliance with state and local codes. A life safety plan will be submitted to the fire marshal before CO. Applicant will restripe the parking lot prior to CO. Grease trap and kitchen hood will be inspected if they're going to, um, re- remain on the property. And the freestanding sign will either be brought into compliance, or, um, either put a new sign or bring the existing non-conforming sign into compliance. And then also, they'll plant street trees along Concord Road, um, along that frontage. And that's it. Recommend approval.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Staub's? Okay. Thank you, Joey. Is the applicant in attendance, and would you please come down and present your application? Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Drew Ehrig, uh, current owner of 652 Concord Road. I purchased the property, uh, the end of this May with the intention of, uh, hopefully being able to open the property as a special event facility, uh, most specifically a wedding banquet hall. Um, I've personally been in the catering hospitality, uh, wedding business for the past 27 years. I currently own a catering company, uh, and full-service restaurant in the city of Atlanta called Endive. And, um, I appreciate, uh, Joey and Rusty's, uh, recommendation, uh, for the rezoning, and, uh, I'm in here tonight to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Ehrig? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Come on. Good evening and welcome.
Hey, how you doing?
Good.
Uh, Robert Higdon. Um, I'm in the Bennett Woods subdivision, just down the street from, from this parcel. Uh, really, I'm not here to speak for or against the property. It's more so for clarity. I know, um, this property has generated a lot of, uh, conversation, uh, in the community. Um, so seeing what was on screen here, I just want to make sure that those that see the video later have clarity. Um, that the, the concern, uh, that I've heard from the neighborhood is that it's been, uh, the proposal is to change it to, uh, commercial, uh, general commercial. At the beginning of the presentation, the slides here, it suggested that the proposal was going to be a community activity center, which I believe is part of the 2040 Vision Plan. So I'm just looking for, you know, uh, clarity on that, if it is indeed. Uh, maybe I just misunderstood what was on screen. If there, if there's, um, a move to, to general commercial, I think the, the community's concern is, you know, God help him, hopefully the, the business will succeed. But as he mentioned, you know, it... Or, you know, there's a lot of challenges with that, that, that parcel, so. Uh, that, that's a general question. Um, either way, good luck to you, you know?
Um, we, we can clarify.
Thank you, Mr. Higdon. Let's let Rusty answer it.
Um, the zoning is from neighborhood shopping to general commercial, and that's a zoning change. And that's specifically deals with the permitted uses allowed on the property. The, the area where you saw community activity center, that is our future land use, um, designation. And the fut- future land use map designates the areas community activity center, and then that allows for corresponding zoning districts within that future land use designation. And, um, I think both neighborhood shopping and, and general commercial are allowable zoning districts within the community activity, um, center designation. I don't believe there was a change in that designation plan for this. So it's rema- it's remaining the same on the, on the future land use map.
Okay.
So we are changing the zoning map to allow his use because neighborhood shopping doesn't allow for an event center.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Higdon. Any other discussion?
Yeah, we haven't tied it to a specific use. It's not a conditional zoning either, so, um, if the business fails, which I hope it doesn't, but yes, they would be allowed to do any kind of business allowed under general commercial. But if you saw the zoning map, there's general commercial in the area.
Yeah.
So, um, it, it's not out of place. It's just, for some specific reason, it was zone neighborhood shopping back in the day, and, you know, we're, we're just trying to, trying to align the, the map with, with what's the proposed use.
I mean, couldn't you, hold on one second. Couldn't you tie the, uh, tie the zoning application to the specific business?
We could, then, but then every time there's a change in business here, we'd have to bring them through a 60-day process to rezone.
Okay.
Rezone the property.
Hang on one second. Mr. Monroe just came in in the middle of this, so he cannot vote on this because he's not been...
Right.
You've not been privileged to all the information, so if you would not sign in until we're done with this. Do that. I'm sorry about that.
What I, I, what I heard from him was that he had concerns about...
About the next, yes.
The next.
Go ahead, Mr. Higdon.
So that, that is, you know, I'll, I'll be blunt. We all know how social media is nowadays, and it's, you know, if, if those of us here in the audience are on Nextdoor or Facebook, you know, the communities have been talking about it. And it, it's not necessarily, uh, about, uh, Mr. Ehrig's business, but i- if it does not succeed, what does that allow? And, you know, one thing that's interesting about his proposal tonight, the next one is an adjacent property to this, right? So if it were to be, you know, zoned general commercial and not conditioned to the property, right, or to the business, what happens if that does fail? It, you know, to these other developments going in, then the next thing on the agenda is a, is, uh, you know, a, a senior living, uh, high-rise, um, property.
Right. We, we've got to stick, we've got to stick with the, the case we're talking about.
Right, right. But, but, so, so I think, you know, from the community, a conditional type of, um, stipulation, I think would...
That opens us up to a couple of different questions, okay? And we'll get those questions answered as well as part of this. Uh, but I kind of broke protocol letting you come back up here, which is fine. Uh, but we will get your answers, okay? That's, I, I hear you loud and clear, and it's a very valid concern, okay? But the first thing I would like to do, as long as I'm not out of order, and I've got the gavel, so I'm pretty sure I'm not.
Your boss.
Is, since, um, since this question has been asked, how about we ask the applicant? Is if that's something they'd be agreeable to before we go down the road of figuring it out, trying to figure it out?
A conditional zoning is used for when we have variances necessary for a development. So it ties them to a specific development plan and a speci- specific building elevations.
Okay.
We don't typically deal with conditional rezonings for use issues because the use is already called out in the individual zoning districts. When you're looking at it at a, one lot next to another lot, yes, that may be an issue. But when you back out and you look at the adjoining lots around there, there's adjoining lots that are zone GC. Those lots aren't tied to a specific use for that, those properties. They are allowed the full gamut of GC uses within that. Um, uh, you know, from a staff perspective, we're... That's the only thing that we see as fair at this point. I mean, we can, we can tie them down, but I don't, you know, I don't know that it, it benefits a whole lot of people because, you know, if somebody wanted to put a car lot there, they couldn't do it because you need a minimum of two acres to do it.
Yeah.
This is 1.9 acres or 1.6 acres, whatever it is. So there, there are restraint, there are restrictions on specific uses that may prohibit certain types of uses from going here.
Okay.
And I would say probably the value of the building in the way that it's designed probably limits it to remaining a restaurant use or something in the future.
I would encourage reuse as a restaurant, at least, having a kitchen. All right, but I would like to hear from the applicant one more time. If you would just come back to the microphone, please. All right, i- if there was some question about it, and they figured out a way to articulate it in a manner that you didn't feel like was, uh, bad for your business, would you consider being agreeable with, um, a stipulation that ties your business to that, to that general commercial designation? And this is a question for you that would have to get a whole lot more work on the staff's side to figure out how to make that happen.
Yeah.
But is that something you'd be agreeable to?
Um, it, it, today at this time, being surprised with the notion, uh, no, I wouldn't. Um, but the one thing that I would be agreeable to is agreeing to businesses that I wouldn't put on the property, uh, like a nightclub, or, you know, a liquor store, or, you know, you know, I would, I would definitely agree to nonuses, um, if those were a concern for the community.
That, that...
Yeah, and just, uh, you know, just to kind of go a little bit further, the property is currently zone neighborhood shopping, which allows for an incredible amount of different uses. Uh, they could range from a full-service restaurant that has a full-service liquor license. Uh, the most recent use, uh, they had, uh, outdoor, uh, alcoholic-driven games that were in plain sight of the community, and, you know, these are things that currently I could do now without even, uh, asking for a rezoning. Uh, what I feel that, you know, what I'm trying to do with the space is something, uh, that, that's a little bit more upscale than the past uses, and I certainly understand the neighborhood's, uh, concern with the possibilities of where a general commercial zoning could lead to. But really, uh, with the limited amount of research that I've done with permitted uses in the city of Smyrna's Muni code, uh, the differences between, uh, general commercial and neighborhood shopping are, are not, uh, are, are, they're pretty similar use, uh, you know, and, uh, the biggest differences that, that I could point out would maybe be the possibility of a late-night nightclub or, or something like that of, you know, but...
But Mr. Ehrig, you, you would be agreeable to some type of eliminating certain businesses from the property? I think that's all the, all the neighborhood wants to hear.
For sure.
I appreciate it, sir. Thank you for coming back up.
My pleasure.
Any other further discussion?
Um, we, we can develop a list. We've done that for several properties. We can, that are similar, and we'll develop a list, and we'll move forward to mayor and council. We can amend our zoning stipulation to address that if that's what you guys want to add.
Okay, the, uh, yeah, I think that's, that's good. Are we, um, are we all done with the discussion? Okay. Thank you. Um, Monday Night Football is back, right? So can I get a motion to approve? From somebody, please, up here on the panel, and I'm sorry, I was reading, not thinking. Uh, I need to entertain a motion, please.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve zoning request Z19-012, rezoning from NS to GC with condit- conditions for use as a special event center. 1.84 acres, land lot 381-652 Concord Road, with special recommendation that the applicant work with community development to stipulate special uses for this particular zoning request.
Thank you, Mr. By. Do we have a second? Ms. Lightfoot, uh, please vote. You have a vote on the motion to approve. Yeah, just abstain. All right, the motion is approved. Good luck with your business, and please know that nobody in this room wants any ill will on your business not being successful. It's just the nature of the beast, right? We got to be looking down the road to figure out, make sure we're protecting the community as much as possible. But thank you and good luck. All right, the next item on the agenda is... 2019-306. This is zoning request Z19-013, rezoning from LI to RHRPD for the development of a 65-unit, age-restricted, senior-living community at 24.88 units per acre. It's 2.62 acres in land lot 381, Smyrna Hill Drive, Prestwick Land Holdings is the applicant. Mr. Staub's, the background, please.
Yes, sir. Z19-013, applicant Prestwick Land Holdings. Be heard by planning zoning tonight and mayor and council October 21st. It's an undeveloped property on Smyrna Hill Drive, adjacent to the property we just discussed. 2.62 acres. Proposed, proposed use is a 65-unit independent senior housing development. Current zoning is light industrial, and proposed zoning is residential high-rise. Current land use is community activity center, and there's proposed land use changed to high-density residential to allow for the senior living facility. All the adjoining, adjoining property owner, uh, excuse me. The adjoining properties are, uh, community activity center, future land use. This is the subject property. It's a four-story building with 65 units. Have a front setback of 12 feet, side setback of 20 feet, rear setback of 30 feet. Have a full access drive along Smyrna Hill. There's a stream buffer that encroaches the east side of the property. And the stormwater detention area will be adjacent to the stream outside of the undisturbed buffers. And then there will be eight parallel parking spaces on the Smyrna Hill Drive with, uh, traffic calming. And then there'll be a five-foot right-of-way dedication and sidewalk along the property front edge on Smyrna Hill. The, the one setback reduction is from 50 feet to 12 feet for the front setback. Staff supports that because of the stream buffer encroachments, and then just to bring the building up closer to Smyrna Hill Drive and allow the parking to be in the rear. This proposed building elevation. Pictures of the subject property and the adjacent properties. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Standard conditions that deal with the architectural components. They'll have to do the stormwater detention. All utilities will be underground, and developer will do any traffic improvements deemed necessary. Pavers at the entrance, no debris buried underground. There'll be decorative streetlights along the frontage, and, uh, applicant will comply with the city's tree ordinance. There'll be a landscape plan, and then the yards will be sodded. There's special conditions that deal with the setbacks, the, the front setback reduction, the side and the rear are what are required. The developer will meet all fire access requirements. Is responsible for any water and sewer improvements. Stormwater improvement... and sewer improvements, stormwater improvements, and the dumpsters will be screened in a three-sided brick enclosure. Be low-intensity lighting. The two last ones are that the property will be developed in compliance with the site plan and they'll be bound to the elevation submitted with the application. We recommend approval.
All right, we have any questions for Mr. Staubes? Okay, thank you, Joey. All right, we'd like to have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about the application. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it. Chuck Young, I'm a partner with Preswick Companies, who is the applicant. Preswick is also the developer for the first two phases at Riverview Landing down the Chautauqua River. And lastly, I'm a Smyrna resident, live in Vine Estates, my wife and two kids.
Very cool.
Joe did a great job covering most of the important items in the application. I'd add, Preswick, we've been doing this for a dozen years now. This will be our twelfth senior housing community. How they amenitized, great programs for the seniors, educational programs, computer programs. Help them with their diets, how to shop, healthy eating, do all kinds of great things for them. And we're just, we're looking forward to doing another one right here in Smyrna. I'd have to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Young? Go ahead, Mr. By.
What's the total property square footage?
Oh, total square footage? I could do a rough estimation based on our unit count. We are, so each average unit size is roughly eight hundred square feet. So figure a thousand counting corridors and lobby space and all that. So we're about sixty-five thousand square feet total, give or take five thousand.
Affordable senior housing is a big issue here in Smyrna. Are you doing anything to provide this at a price point for those that live near the median or below the median income?
Absolutely. The rents will be from six hundred fifty dollars to a thousand dollars a month. The majority of them will be towards that kind of eight hundred, give or take a hundred dollars. So we definitely have an opportunity here to deliver some senior housing at a really good price point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I have one more, I have a few more questions. As far as amenities for the residents, will, I know that you've mentioned food and things like that, will there be any other type of recreational plans proposed for them for activities, onsite shopping or anything like that?
So onsite shopping, excuse me, we will not do. We will have an, have a list of them here if you don't mind me reading from it. So we have preventive healthcare services, where we actually have the local service providers come in and provide those services. Health screenings, behavioral education, behavioral health education, excuse me, computer literacy programs, health education, various screenings, healthy eating, excuse me, healthy eating initiatives. And we do those, in addition to those, we have at least, once a week, we have birthday celebrations, movie nights, exercise classes, and financial literacy.
What about outdoor recreation, like nature trails or something in the, in the stream buffer area?
Since the, it'd be hard to tell at this point if we're going to be able, how far down we'll be able to access into that without having full site design completed. Certainly, if there's that opportunity, that'd be great. We do have a handful of outdoor amenities, gathering spaces that we put adjacent to the building. And a lot of times, frankly, we, once folks start moving in and we see what the interest level is, different things spur out of that. We have one community in Atlanta that actually started their own choir, so they will do that. Some, we have some on the Atlanta Beltline. So I know that there are activities that involve trips on that to get out and get them out in the community a little more. So I think some of these, the only things I just read are kind of the bare minimums. I think once we get in there and folks start moving in, whatever they want to do, we try to accommodate.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Young. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor. Okay. Let the record reflect, there is no public comment on this item. All right. Any further discussion from the board or staff? Okay.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve zoning request Z nineteen dash zero one three, rezoning from LI to RH R-PD for the development of a sixty-five unit, age-restricted senior living community at twenty-four point eight units per acre, two point six two acres, land lot three eighty-one, Smyrna Hill Drive, Preswick Land Holdings LLC.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second, Ms. Harrington. All in favor or opposed? Please vote. The application is approved, seven zero. Any further discussion? In here? No. Well, I guess nobody's going to remind me to approve the minutes from the last meeting anymore. All right. The last item on our agenda is to approve the minutes from the August twelfth, two thousand nineteen Planning and Zoning Meeting. We need a motion to approve the minutes as presented. We have a motion, we have a motion to approve Mr. Bartlett. We have a second, Ms. Harrington. Please vote to approve the minutes. The minutes are approved, seven zero. I want to apologize to everybody up here on my panel that I've cost them twenty-five minutes of their life tonight. I appreciate, appreciate you guys. Anything else from you, Rusty? Okay. All right. Without any further business, this meeting is adjourned at six fifty-six in the PM.